We figured you're catching your breath from the long walk.
Yeah, yeah. I actually never have a long walk. That's the nice thing about living here. Whether it's City Hall or the town park, it's just a nice little stroll.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Could we please do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Wiest.
Hi.
Widmer.
Here.
Lempers.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Golia.
Yes.
We're all here.
Welcome, everybody, to our first meeting since our August break. And, uh, let's see, so since it's a study session, we have public comments. If anyone has a comment on an item on the agenda, they are welcome to give that comment now.
And if I could add, if you are joining us by Zoom call, at the bottom of your screen or the top where the participants option is, you can click that button and raise your hand. You have the option to send a text to me at 650-687-7084. Or if you're dialing in by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand and you'll be called on.
Okay, I don't see any.
I have none.
Comments, so why don't we go to the first item, which is a project update on the Neighborhood Traffic Management Action Plan?
This one goes to Mr. Ovadia.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to provide you with a brief update on the Neighborhood Traffic Management Action Plan outreach effort. Following on the efforts of the town-wide local traffic flow, long-range planning solution study, the council prioritized the review of traffic calming and other local traffic control measures. The council expressed a desire to include a neighborhood-focused community outreach effort to discuss concerns and outline potential solutions. The town engaged TJKM to assist with the effort. And though we were temporarily delayed due to COVID-19 and the related shelter-in-place orders, staff worked with TJKM to develop a project website and to hold two virtual public meetings to solicit feedback from our residents regarding their top traffic, safety, and mobility concerns. We held those meetings on August 6th and August 13th. There are approximately 14 residents that attended, excluding staff consultants and members of the council. We provided an overview of the project and the project website, including the feedback tools that we have created, which include a survey and an interactive map so that folks can mark on the map the areas of concern that they have. And we tried to do a significant level of outreach to advertise the project website as well as the public outreach meetings, which included mailers to residents, going through our social media and other online portals with the release of news flashes and other things to our residents, as well as an article that was posted in the almanac regarding our efforts. Attached to the report, you have summaries of the feedback that we received in the meeting with regards to a couple of polling questions as to how people heard about the meeting, as well as the top areas of concern. The questions are aggregated. People were able to put in multiple responses, and that's why the numbers are higher than the number of attendees. You also have a summary of site visitors to our website, as well as those that participated in completing the surveys and using the interactive map. So the data you have there is as of August 24th. Through the end of the month, we did have a handful of additional people that completed the survey responses and a couple of folks that use the interactive map to provide the input. We are aware that the meetings were held in August, which is normally a time that folks go on vacation, but due to the shelter-in-place orders and limited travel, as well as the fact that participation at the meetings was virtual, we felt that it was okay to have the meetings in August. We have an opportunity to extend the outreach period through the end of the month at no cost with our consultant. The website is up and active, and we are looking forward to receiving as much public input as we can. And if the council elects to extend the public comment period, we will again be reaching out to folks via the online and social media tools to let people know that the input period has been extended. And so if you have any questions, open a feedback from the council with regards to the extension, as well as feedback on the meetings that were held. I know that there are a few of you that did attend the meetings and we're certainly looking forward to hear feedback on how you thought those meetings went.
Great. Question, Elizabeth?
The chair. Um, yes, I attended the meeting on the 13th, and I thought it was very informative, and I heard some residents requesting an extension of the survey period. And, you know, it prompted me to want to send down a notice to residents to encourage them to do that, but without council approval, actually approving the extension period, I did not. So depending upon what we give direction to today, and if we are going to have another online session, I would, you know, just encourage all of us to send out to our residents in our email list and information about this, so that they would be encouraged to participate.
Are there any other questions, members of the council?
I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Normally, I guess, normally, our process is, as they complete a report, is TK, TJKM, actually, was there a problem? Did they notice a problem? Did they not like the input that they received? And that's why we're here? I mean, obviously, we know that COVID most likely had an impact to process and getting people out, but did an alarm bell go off by the consultant on this?
No, not necessarily. I think that we did receive a couple of requests from the public, and there was an expression by a couple of the council members to extend the period. And it's relatively easy to do. We have not yet compiled the data from the online portal with regards to specific issues, and their next task will be to start pulling that data out and starting to compile it so that we can get a clear picture of what the major issues and concerns are. But we are always interested in hearing what our residents have to say, and if extending the comment period by a little bit will help those that had some trouble before participate. We're certainly open to that extension. I don't know that a, an additional virtual meeting would be very helpful. The meetings that we had are recorded, and they were posted on the project website. And if folks are interested in the instructions on how to navigate the interactive map, those are included in the recordings.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do, which relates to other opportunities for public feedback. Literally a question, Robert. What is this process, and when would our residents have an opportunity to get feedback, other than through this, you know, other than the next month?
When you say get feedback or give feedback?
Give, give feedback.
Well, we always get calls from our residents, and we're happy to take them. We're taking them via email if they wanted to send comments to me. I'm forwarding them to the consultant. The few that I got, I did forward to them to be compiled with the rest of the data. So this is an initial, these were initial listening sessions in terms of gathering feedback with regards to any specific issues that our residents wanted to relay to us to consider as we move forward through the process. Our next step include aggregating the data, analyzing the data, and then coming back with some potential recommendations or alternatives to try and alleviate some of the problems. And we will be going back to the residents with some of those potential solutions, understanding that any, most solutions, there are pluses and minuses, and so we want to relay that information, gather feedback as to what, what they think about that as well.
So there'll be a work product from the consultants, and residents have an opportunity to respond to that work product. And then also any specific proposals we work on through the, you know, the normal town process, they'd get opportunities for feedback, right? So there'd be at least two more opportunities. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'm, I just have a question about that. I'm just a little confused about those other opportunities.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll clarify. So as we get the data aggregated, we're going to be actually coming back and having that information available. And our intent was to present that information to the council and to the Transportation Committee, as well as post information online as to the type of feedback that we received. Once the data is aggregated and analyzed, there'll be a a work product that outlines some potential solutions that, again, will be shared with the public. And again, to gather feedback with regards to any specific ideas in any particular area to make sure that we do outreach to the community, again, to get that feedback. And that'll be prior to us coming back to the city council and the transportation committee, as well as city council, with some of those options.
Robert, I have, I have a follow-on question. The, we can see in the staff packet today, there's some information that looks like it is basically survey responses that the attendees at the two outreach meetings provided. And at the end of the staff packet, there's a a data list of how many people visited the website and how many completed surveys, 162 completed surveys, and it looks like 28 people attended these two interactive sessions. I'm assuming that, and this is the question, that the 162 responses to the survey is going to give quite a bit of data, probably more expansive than the four or five questions that were asked to those people online that are showed in the staff packet. And will you be aggregating all of that and?
That's, that's what's going to happen. So in addition to the survey responses, the information that people have provided on the interactive map, where they have an opportunity to pinpoint specific issues and make comments on the map, that'll be aggregated as well.
Right. Bill, did you have a question?
No, I'll turn it into a comment when we get there. That's okay.
I do have a question, Rick, on top of yours, if I could.
Go ahead, Carrie.
To add on to Rick's comment, or, you know, analyzing of the data, one of the concerns from residents is that people from out of the area can be the people that create how we create policy or decisions. Is, are we able to figure out if the comments are primarily residents, or if they're out-of-area people saying, hey, I want to go through Atherton faster, here's how you can fix it? Do we have a way of filtering that information?
When folks fill out the survey, there is a question as to what neighborhood they live in, or if they are from outside. And so I'm going to say that we will have to rely on folks being honest with regards to their responses, but if people are using their email address to put things in, we can't necessarily take that email address to figure out where they're from.
Okay.
So I do have a question, Rick, for, as a follow-on to what Carrie just asked. Is there a way that you can check the IP addresses? You can check the IP addresses to find out whether or not the same household is putting in multiple responses to move it up or move it down?
I do not know.
Because I know if you're doing Survey Monkey or something like that, it doesn't necessarily do that. Sometimes the different survey systems do it, and sometimes they do not. So, you know, it'd be nice to know if we were going to keep, you know, keep things open, which, you know, I will recommend that we do, but to know if somebody just kind of loading up the system with their specific interest, or, or are we trying to get, you know, genuine responses from a variety of people, so.
Bill, I assume that they can do that. I mean, on their, on their website traffic, they are separating it by a number of visits versus unique visitors. So I'm assuming by unique, they mean IP addresses. Hopefully, they did the survey in the same way.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions? Let me see if there's any public comment on this matter. Because if anyone has a public comment, you can raise your hand on the chat feature, or you can let Anthony know, as he has described at the beginning of the meeting. I don't see any public comment. Do you have any, Anthony?
No, sir, no hands, no messages.
Well, let me bring the item back for council comments. Go ahead, Bill.
So I got a number of emails, you know, indicating that right before school was scheduled to start, people did try and get away a little bit, and that they they would appreciate if we would extend the period of time for them to, you know, provide input, to get more input. You know, we could go through the schools and ask the schools to communicate that out. You know, I'm sure the PTAs from the different organizations can send letters to each home, you know, homestead. Of course, that wouldn't impact Carrie's, because they're going to send it to all of them. Carrie's comment about, well, people from other jurisdictions will put input in, but I think we want to get the best input from, from everybody to try and help guide us, and so I I'm 100% in favor of extending this and, and possibly, you know, doing some additional outreach through other mediums. You know, if we want to send another postcard, then that'd be great, but, you know, that runs into $3,000, $4,000. But I would think that we could do email blast, as well as ask the schools to participate, if, if everybody else is in agreement to that. More input is better than none. Thanks.
Other comments? Well, let, I'll make a comment. I think the idea of extending the period for at least another month makes sense. I understand that the cost of holding another interactive meeting would be $8,000 from the consultants. I think that doesn't make sense. I understand, contrary to what you suggested, Bill, and George, please correct me if I'm wrong, that sending out a postcard would cost $800 to $1,000, and?
Somewhere between 800 and 1,500, I think.
Oh, okay, sorry, stand corrected.
Yeah, no problem. I do note from the 24 or 28 responses that we got to these two interactive sessions, that a majority of people, or most people anyway, found out about the session from the postcard mailer that the town had sent out. And a number found out about it from either the town's newsflash and a, and one from the website. So it may be, maybe, maybe if other people on the council have any opinions about whether it'd be worthwhile to send out another postcard, we wouldn't be having an interactive session, but we could be encouraging people to go to the website and fill out the survey. And I think the more respondents we have to that survey, the better. I mean, we have 162 survey responses. I'm not sure how many unique IP addresses that is, but nevertheless, it's a good number, and certainly, the more, the better. So, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you. So I agree with sending out another postcard, and if it can be done with, you know, under the $1,500 number, that would be great. I don't think an add in the almanac, I don't think that the interactive session for 8,000 is a good deal idea. But I also think that every one of us, council members, we have our own email list, and I think residents will respond to a personal email from us saying, you know, this is important, and even if we want to structure a template, an email to send out, you know, with the information. Like I said, I was inspired to do that from our last meeting, August 13th, but then did not, because we hadn't formalized the extension period. And at the time, we were talking about maybe mid-September, and now we're talking about September 30th, the end of September, which I think is a better timeframe. And we're absolutely right, Bill, that a lot of our residents were gone the month of August, and then coming back and trying to get their kids settled and up for being online tutored at school was a very hard time at the end of August. So I think they have some breathing room to maybe take. I think this is really important, and everybody has an Atherton traffic issue that I think that they would like to get off their chest and express to us. And, you know, and not to wait until after all the data is collated, and then, you know, have to plow through it all, but this is kind of real-time. Saying, this intersection really is irritating to me. I find it very dangerous, et cetera, et cetera. My opinion.
Okay. Other comments?
I have some, if it's timely. I, I agree. I think that the postcard would be out, the more information we have, the merrier. I do want to be sensitive to resident concerns that, you know, people from other jurisdictions can try to manipulate our traffic management program, so that if the consultant can take a note to see if there is any way to figure that out and potentially track, or at least identify it, so that we, when we have to consider something, are sensitive to that. We had some issues when we had the intersection of ECR and Selby Lane looked at, and I just would hate to make policy based on another jurisdiction wanting to do something through our jurisdiction.
Mike, do you have a comment? Yep. No, okay. You might be on mute. Okay. I don't see any other comments.
Mayor DeGolia, I think Councilmember Lempers is asking for a minute, and no, 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 no.
There we go. I wasn't able to unmute. Somehow Anthony had me locked out. Probably a good decision generally. The, and I also, am I able to comment on the substance of this? You know, the questions that we're asking and that kind of thing, or is this something we're supposed to stay away from at this point?
George?
Well, you, you mean in terms of what the issues may be that the community may be concerned about? Or more along the lines of where you want this to go long-term?
Where I want this to go and the questions we're asking, because they don't match up for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because I, one of the things I'm a little concerned about is we're getting information on specific, you know, intersections, sidewalks, lack of sidewalks, you know, stretches of road. And one of the things we, I had hoped to get through this process was a more general view and introduce the, the community, the idea of whether we should be introducing, as a general matter, traffic calming devices and, and, you know, be directing traffic and certain things. And we seem to have skipped that. We've gone straight to specific issues. I think we can still back into that, that larger issue, but when we had discussed this previously, in my view at least, I thought we had started, we were going to start from the general and then work to the specific. You know, do, do we want, are we open to the concept of traffic, of traffic calming devices? Are we open to the concept of of directing traffic away from neighborhood streets and towards arterials and things like that? And instead, we seem to have jumped right into specifics about different, you know, stretches of road.
Well.
Go ahead.
No, no, no. If you weren't finished, I?
No, I wasn't. And so I'm a little disappointed in that, that I think, I think a more helpful public process would be to start with the general and figure out whether we are even open to these kinds of things, and then apply the tools, you know, to this. We are learning a lot from what people say, but we, a lot of this information that we gathered is information that comes up through the Transportation Committee anyway, in that there's, I sat through both of the sessions and learned a lot, but candidly, nothing that was surprising. It was all stuff that I think we all sort of knew, and the police knew in advance about where the problem areas are. And I don't think we are advancing the ball in terms of public discussion about how we, as a community, should be addressing these issues, which we know exist.
Well, let me make a comment based on that, because I think that's a good comment. I do note that in the limited amount of response, 37 specific responses that we got to the question on on the polls from those that were on the two calls, the question was, what is your top traffic, safety, and mobility concern? That isn't quite as, that's not dealing with solutions, right? Like
Right.
traffic calming devices versus enforcement versus some other mechanism to address those, but it is, at, at a general level, identifying what the principal concerns are. And the two most significant concerns in both of those sessions were speeding and cut-through traffic, which I think is completely consistent with our general understanding. And I, and the third one would be congestion, so. And then there's a whole variety of other specifics, but I think that working from the general to the specific is great, and there is a difference between what the concerns are and what the potential solutions are. And I'm assuming that the more, much more detailed survey that 160 people have filled out will give both, you know, quite a bit of data on both of those issues. George?
I, I agree with that, and I think, Mike, part of your desire here is to have the council have that global conversation about cut-through traffic and moving them to the circulation streets versus the neighborhood streets, and make sure the council's on that philosophy, moving forward with any solutions that the town implements.
I actually think we need to hear from residents, because that's a big deal, I think, you know? If we are open to the concepts of speed humps and, and, you know, whatever, of, of different traffic calming and routing mechanisms, you know, we'll go down one path, and I, and I'm not, I haven't heard a good community discussion about whether we should be open to that or not, you know? And so I'm a little worried if we go right to the specifics. I was in one group that had a long conversation about the lack of a sidewalk on Watkins between El Camino and Digglespile, or the tracks. And, and, you know, that was very helpful. But it didn't, it didn't address broader, sort of, the community issues about traffic more, you know, at large.
Yeah.
I'd like to have that broader conversation at some point in the process, and I don't think the council should do it without hearing from, from residents.
Yeah, well, just to provide a place where that might fit is after we aggregate the data and we start that conversation with our residents about potential solutions, that's the opportune time to have that broader discussion to say that, you know, there are. You know, there are pluses and minuses to different types of solutions, and we are soliciting feedback, not just on the specifics, but on that global perspective on where and how we should potentially look at routing traffic. Because that will potentially inform some of those detailed answers.
Yeah. And I actually would love to hear the council members' views on this. I don't mean to, yeah, I see a little.
I have something. Hi.
Bill had his hand up first, then Elizabeth.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
So following on with with Mike's comment and looking at the data that's collected, which was attachment one, you know, and it said that, you know, the top two things were speeding and and cut through traffic. And the way that you manage those things is through traffic calming devices. I, you know, I think, I mean, I can infer some of the stuff, but it'd be great, as Mike said, maybe we can go ahead and we can be more specific. You know, are you okay to have a speed hump actually in front of your house? Because that creates noise. But, you know, I think the traffic calming devices do affect several of these things with regards to cut through traffic, speeding, and even personal safety. That would mean people walking on the side of the road feel uncomfortable with cars passing, et cetera. So anyway, I just throw that out as a follow on to Mike's comment. Thank you very much.
Elizabeth?
Okay, so my comment is similar to what Mr. Widmer is, but the follow on with Mike's wanting to have the discussion about how do we then mitigate these issues? And we need to have that discussion. But I think with this survey, it's kind of like the first step. It's like, let's find out what residents feel the real problem is. Is it speeding? Is it cut through traffic? Is it congestion or whatever? And then, okay, we identify those and we come back and say, okay, what are all the ways that can be solved? Because there's a very, there's a smorgasbord, and they all have pros and cons for each solution. And I have to tell you, and you know, there's a resident who has very strong opinions about some of these traffic quote unquote calming processes or implements, and that could, in his mind, exacerbate the problem. Just a little quick thing about a speed hump. My daughter lives on Cambridge Avenue in Menlo Park. And you've come off of El Camino and down, or you can come up from University Drive and then up towards El Camino. And there are three or four speed humps. Cars just, you know, blow by there and there it's it does not prevent that cut through because that road is an artery that then feeds off into other areas. Anyway, pro and con, I mean, in some areas, it might might work in the size of the speed hump. So that's a whole nother discussion, but I really think that we will get there. I think that we need to kind of collect the initial data and find out where, what people feel are the biggest issues. And then figure out, well, what are the alternatives to solve those issues? And then we'll have that discussion, Mike. I really truly believe what you're saying is we're going to get there.
Go ahead, George.
So you're saying this is a roundabout way to get there? Just kidding.
Oh.
George, you just couldn't.
I could not resist. But the the important thing, I think, for the residents to understand is a road like Atherton Avenue isn't a neighborhood street. It's going to be a collector's street that's going to have more traffic. The cars are going to be going a little faster and things like that. So traffic control devices on a street like Atherton Avenue may not be as appropriate as they may be on Selby Lane or Austin or a smaller street.
Right. Yes.
And that's the the conversation I think the town really needs to have. And Elizabeth, you're right, I don't know when we need to have that, but at some point, I think we need to have that conversation. Because, you know, for most people, their home is their biggest investment or one of their biggest investments. And what you're saying is the town is going to take some actions, could take some action. If the town takes certain actions, you're going to have more traffic in front of your house. And that's by design. The town's actually intending for that to happen. That has negative consequence for people who, in this example, live on Atherton Avenue. Whereas it benefits people who live on neighborhood streets, you know, off of Atherton Avenue. And that's a, I think that's an important conversation to have, and it's easier to have, I think, globally than it is to have. But a series of little one offs, where we talk about if we put a speed up on this street, how will that affect, you know, the other five streets around it?
Exactly. Like a snake. Squeeze it here, it comes out there.
And through the chair.
Yes, please, Karen.
Yeah, can I also add that the consideration, which has been something that there's been a lot of outcry on, is the apps? And how does the town deal with all the apps that are diverting traffic? I think we need to, you know, put that in the mix as a discussion item.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I totally agree with that. It's an enforcement. Where to focus enforcement? It's how it's how to address the problem. And right now, I was on both of those calls. The focus is trying to get residents to identify what they believe to be the problem. Their focus hasn't been on what the acceptable alternatives for solving the problem have been. Although on one of the calls, there was quite a discussion on the whole issue of traffic calming devices. Some people, you know, liking them very much and one or two people disliking them very much.
So where are we?
We're about to move on to the next item. This is, we're not giving any direction to staff. This is just a conversation to enable the council to talk about the two sessions that have occurred. And I understand that there's going to be an aggregation of the data and a presentation by the consultants to us. At which point we'll have, or at least we'll initiate them an in-depth conversation. And I think that Mike's suggestion to direct it, not just at what what residents perceive the problem to be, but to hopefully, from the survey, we're going to get information about what they see as enforcement. And we can talk at the next meeting about if we need to gather more information, particularly in that area.
But we're extending the survey through September, but we're not going to have another public meeting for $8,000.
Right. Nobody nobody has suggested to do that.
I think there's an action part here where the council would authorize the extension of the survey.
Yes. I'd like to make the motion that the we extend the survey and that the until September 30th and that the town within the next week send out another postcard mailer stating that.
I second it.
Widmer? Yes, sir. Widmer?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, Wiest?
Hi.
Lampres?
Hi.
Vice Mayor?
Hi.
Mayor DeGolia?
Yes. Okay, I think that concludes the item, and we can move on to the next item. Which is to discuss and authorize the transmission of a comment letter to the California High Speed Rail Authority on the draft environmental impact report for the San Francisco to San Jose project second segment of high-speed rail.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The High Speed Rail Authority, which is responsible for planning the for the planning, design and building and operation of the high-speed rail system in California, has issued their draft environmental impact report and environmental impact statement for the San Francisco to San Jose segment. They released that for public comment on July 10. And though initially there was a 45-day comment period, it was extended to 60 days, and that period ends on September 9. Town staff, along with the Rail Committee, reviewed the EIR. There was a subcommittee that assisted in the review and the development of the attached comment letter. And so I do want to thank the members of the Rail Committee and the subcommittee that were involved in that. And so we identified that there were some significant impacts to the town specifically related to transportation, safety and security, noise and vibration, and parks and parks, recreation and open space. The implementation of high-speed rail service along the corridor is going to significantly increase gate downtimes at the Watkins Avenue and Fair Oaks Lane crossings with the increased number of trains that will be coming down the corridor. Though the High Speed Rail Authority has identified that there will be some significant impact to local traffic. They are relying on certain provisions in CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, that allows them to forego mitigation of those impacts based on an assessment that indicates that the overall vehicle miles traveled will be less than current, and therefore they don't need to mitigate. It is our belief that those analyses are based on out-of-date data with regards to ridership of the high-speed rail system. The data they used, I believe, is based on 2016 forecast numbers. And since then, they've come out with their 2018 and draft 2019 business plans, which successively show reduced forecasts in ridership. And so with those reductions in ridership, we believe that the vehicle mile travel reduction that they're forecasting is inaccurate at this point, and we feel that the local traffic impacts due to high-speed rail should be mitigated. Additionally, gate downtimes are going to have an impact potentially on police and emergency response times with our police station located right near the Fair Oaks Crossing. Efforts to go eastward may be impacted by the gate downtimes. And there should be an effort to mitigate that, as well as we have ambulance services that stage at Holbrook Palmer Park. And then there are also impacts to fire response as well, with the primary response stations for Atherton being on the west side. So the draft EIR EIS also acknowledges some significant impacts related to noise. There is the way that they have assessed where they would like, where they plan to mitigate is based on how many people are impacted and the cost of mitigation. And so they chose basically a dollar value per receptor that they are willing to mitigate. With that assessment, they are, in essence, foregoing the mitigation of nearly half of the people that are impacted at a moderate level. And so we believe that they should fully mitigate the impacts of of their of the noise and vibrations that are developed through the addition additional tracks and the high speed that is that they're coming through. And the last item specifically related to their design is though they are planning to install four quadrant gates at Watkins, which we believe are necessary and important for traffic safety. The design template that they're using proposes to install 50-foot medians on either side of the the crossing, which would impact accessibility from Watkins to and from Dinkelspiel Station Lane. Because that median would cross the intersection of Station Lane. And so it would eliminate the potential of right turns to and from, which we believe is a problem, particularly with regards to police response, accessibility to the town hall, the library and to the park. And so we have outlined in the letter, some specific mitigation that we are recommending. And those include mitigating the full traffic impacts to a level of service C and level of service E. Level service C for local streets and level of service E for El Camino Real, which are consistent with our circulation element and with CCAG's congestion management plan. Revising the design of the four quadrant gates such that the median islands are not included, particularly on the west side, where it would be blocking Dinkelspiel Station Lane. Mitigating the response, their impacts to emergency response. Mitigating noise by providing noise barriers along the full length of the corridor on both sides of the tracks. Installing security fencing in all areas where noise barriers are not installed to prevent people from entering into the track area. And one of the things that we noticed is the duration of construction for various items were very optimistic, and we believe that they should adequately describe the duration of construction so that they can adequately mitigate the impacts. And so with that, I am open to answering any specific questions. And we are looking towards council feedback on the recommendations that we put with regards to specific mitigation measures.
Let's unmute myself. Questions, Bill?
Yeah, so thanks for this, Robert. You know, it's a good report, and thanks to the Rail Committee. I have a couple of questions based on some of the mitigation activity. So I don't understand what widening the El Camino intersection to provide a dedicated rate right lane turn at Atherton Ave has to do with the rail system. Because it's on the other side of El Camino, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever that we would say, two tenths of a mile later, you need to make an investment and widen our road. That's that's my first one. And then widening Watkins at its approach to Middlefield, again, that's too far away. That's that's like three quarters of a mile or more from from the train tracks. And I just don't see how that's applicable. I think we need to make reasonable suggestions that they they possibly might approach. The other question I had was, you know, I didn't understand the station numbering that's in the noise. STA 1554 plus 50 to STA, I assume that that's between Menlo Park and and Atherton and then Atherton to Redwood City. I'm not sure. But for me, I think we should make a request that we have noise barriers. I mean, it should be for all communities. It shouldn't just be for us. It should be for everything, because, you know, our people are all over the place. Some of them, you know, touch the tracks directly, like Loyden Park. And I can understand why their interest would be specifically Loyden Park. But there are other locations that that similarly will get will get impacted. So I think that we should take the higher road and just say, you know, all communities should do that. So.
Bill, let's stick stick to the question, and we'll come back to comments after we've had public comments.
Okay, well, the question I've asked the question on the roads.
Okay, so one of the concerns that we had was they had forecasted that the level of service at the intersections were going to go to F. And they were not proposing to mitigate anything. And so what we looked at was the need to make some improvements at those intersections to facilitate mobility. And so understanding that El Camino is not directly next to the tracks, but the impacts of traffic at the crossing due to forecasted delay indicates that there is going to be some impact at those intersections.
Well, you know, my comment back. Well, you know, my comment back to that is when we looked at the traffic survey on El Camino, all of our intersections, including that one, were already at F. So saying they're going to be F as a result of this, that doesn't make any sense. I can see the other locations, but not the ones here. I just don't understand the logic, that's all. But thank you for that.
Okay, and just to, I just want to provide a little bit of clarity on the station numbers. So, the the plan or the proposed mitigation by high-speed rail was to put the noise barrier along the backside of Loiden Park only. And, it's our belief that just putting the noise barrier on one side would just allow the noise to buffer buff it off of that wall and go to the other side. And so we were recommending that the that the barriers be put on both sides of the tracks. And the reference to the station numbers that we are recommending is for the entire length through the town of Atherton. We did mention that we believe that they should fully mitigate the noise everywhere, but we provided specific information with regards to our desires in the town.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? I have a question. One of the mitigations that you suggest, Robert, in the letter, and I guess I have two questions. The first is just an assumption that the goal of this conversation is to approve the letter, which is attachment one. And in that, okay, and in that letter, one of the mitigations for the traffic impacts to LOSC on local streets and LOSC on El Camino Real is, among other things, signalization of Middlefield, Watkins, and Middlefield Fair Oaks. And I assume that that's for improved mobility, but I'd like to clarify that. And, I just want to ask about that, because I'm not sure that we've ever decided we wanted to signalize those streets, and could you give some background to that?
Certainly, I think that we are all well aware of the traffic issues at those intersections with regards to the difficulty of getting in and out of Fair Oaks and Watkins. And so, it was, whether you call it a a negotiating tool or some other means by asking them to look at mitigating the the level of service at those intersections is the reason why they were asked. Again, the primary thing is that they believe that they don't need to mitigate local traffic. And we want to impress our opinion that they should be mitigating local traffic.
Mike, did you have a question?
Yeah, it's the same, same question you have, or close to the same question, which is on the traffic, one of the things I'm concerned about, you list three categories of mitigants there that we haven't discussed, and I'm not sure that we as a councillor, we as a town, would actually want them to do these things. So I want to make sure I understand, when we send this letter, you know, we're not committing ourselves to anything, right?
I don't think that we're necessarily committing ourselves to anything. If you would like to reword it such that it's limited at them mitigating local traffic without providing how they could do that, the letter can certainly be revised to reflect that.
Great. Are there other questions?
I have a question.
I do, Rick.
Elizabeth, and then Carrie.
Okay, I'm, my, real quickly, on page two of 10, there in the paragraph talking about factual errors and omissions, the first says in section 3.2.3, consistency with plans and laws, it failed to acknowledge inconsistencies. And then the very next one is the same thing, that it says it failed to recognize inconsistencies. And I'm just wondering, is there a technical difference between knowledge and recognize? Or is that not in the same?
No, the intent was just to say that they have inconsistencies in their document with those those adopted documents, so.
Right. And the 50-foot-long raised median island, I assume there was a graphic or some other kind of a visual that was included in the EIR document, but I actually didn't see, but.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and so, I agree that, yeah, all right.
Robert, my question really. Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, thank you. Robert, my question really is on, I guess, where Bill was related to the mitigation component of widening intersection component for Fair Oaks and the widening component of Watkins. Is the logic behind that actually so cars can stage prior to the crossing? Because of the lack of distance between the crossing and actual roadway? In other words, creating two lanes in each direction?
Can you, can you repeat that? I'm sorry, Carrie.
So, obviously, we know that the issue is longer gate times and, or more gate times. And I don't think moving traffic is going to be the answer, because cars are going to have to stage more at those intersection points. Is that the logic of two lanes in each direction, meaning widening of roadway? Because it has to be staged cars, correct? Because we can't move cars in that distance if that's the logic.
Yeah, well, I think the staging is going to end up in the queuing lines towards the, towards the crossing. And potentially, for example, going westward, that queuing will likely go past McCormick. I mean, it's going to extend way past McCormick, for example. And the queuing in the other direction will be heading up towards El Camino. They didn't really provide data as to how long the queue lengths are going to be at the crossings.
Okay, so basically, it really does mean that the logic is, is that more cars can stack up, because we don't have the space on the existing single-lane roadway component, provided that the gates are down for longer periods. We can't move them, because the ECR and Middlefield, if the congestion gets too bad, it has to really be widening the roadway to actually allow people to be more compact, frankly. Okay, thank you, Robert.
Are there any other questions for Robert? Okay, seeing none, let me see if there's any public comment on this issue. And again, as Anthony has indicated, you can provide public comment by raising your hand after clicking participants on the on the Zoom chat feature, or you can enter a chat, and, or you can respond to the email address that Anthony has provided, and if you're on the phone, star nine will enable you to give a comment. I don't see any comments.
Nor do I.
Okay, then let's bring it back for comments.
If I can make comments to start off with, thank you. Robert, I, you know, when I read it as well, and my attention got the same attention that Bill did, I think if we clean up the language, because as it's written, it doesn't really doesn't really say what the overall intent of widening roadway, because I would dismiss that saying, that's ridiculous. But if your logic is behind widening the roadway, because backup traffic will exist, and we don't have the roadway length to handle a significant volume in traffic, unless there's a wider roadway, that would make more sense to me if I was reading it as a mitigation measure, which would require widening the roadway.
Bill?
Yeah, so I brought up the noise thing. You know, I think in your, in your comments, it would be good to say that we believe the, you know, the high-speed rail should be mitigating the noise and the vibration up and down the line as it's going through these communities, all of the communities. And then you can say, then add to, specifically in Atherton, we identify these areas, okay? But then, you know, of course, if they only put it on the one side, as you pointed out, then that's kind of, you know, now we're just pushing the noise over to North Fair Oaks, and that's really not fair either. So I think we should make a general comment and recommend that they do that, and then specifically in Atherton, this is what we're talking about. So that'd be my other change. Thanks.
Other comments? Well, let me give a comment. So, Robert, I understand your intent with, I'm looking at the first bullet point in the traffic mitigation matters, where, which has gathered most of the questions and comments dealing with both widening the streets and signalization. And to Mike's comment that we really haven't discussed doing these things and made a decision that this is something that if somebody else were paying for it, we'd even want to do. I would be more comfortable with making a strong statement about them having an obligation to mitigate the traffic impacts to the level of service change that they are projecting for both local streets and ECR. And suggesting, I mean, I know you're suggesting some options, and it ends up being dollars that they would have to spend, so ultimately, it becomes a money contribution to the town, for us to do that mitigation, but to suggest fairly substantial issues, like both the signalization and the widening of the roads, when we haven't talked about them, I'd be more comfortable with keeping that more general. I don't know how other members of the council feel. Bill?
Yeah, I think keeping things general is probably a better approach. The other thing that I think, you know, we're just assuming that they won't pay for a under-the-rail pass, which, you know, I think that, and I think that they've been pretty clear with that. They keep, you know, waffling back and forth on where they're going to trench it, they're going to put it up on a tall berm, and now it's just going to be at grade, and the heck with us. And so I do think that your issue with regards to, Robert, the, you know, the fire and the police protection, half the town won't be able to get fire, you know, police protection from the fire, from the police station during rush hour. And wherever the officers are, that's going to, that's going to keep the other part of town from getting there. And so I think that we should at least call out that we believe that they have an obligation to provide, you know, a timely underpass, maybe at Fair Oaks or something like that. But I do think that that's one of the things that we're really lacking. And, you know, even our neighbor to the south, I mean, they, you know, they had plans for it, but they don't have the money for it, obviously. And so, you know, I think it's never hurts to ask. I'd rather ask for that than ask for a bunch of widening of roads that and signalization that perhaps we don't, you know, we may not want. So that's my two cents. Thank you for listening.
Other comments? Elizabeth?
No, actually, I thought the letter that is being presented was really quite detailed and well put together. I think the rail committee had a lot of input, and I think staff did a good job of trying to address the issues. I honestly don't think that anything we ask is going to move the needle one way or another, so we can just, you know, throw stuff against the wall all day long, and you know, kind of, if wishes were horses, kind of a thing, we'd all, you know, fly away. So, I, I, I think that the comment, it did take me aback a little bit about the signals on Middlefield at Fair Oaks and Watkins, that we hadn't discussed that. Not to say that I would maybe not be in favor of it, because I know how dangerous, or some other kind of safety issue that, but having it be part of the high-speed rail deal. Anyway, if we're not bound to it, it's something that if they would be willing to pay for something like that, we might use it for other things. Anyway, I you know, it's very distressing, the whole high-speed rail issue, and yet, I think that staff did a really good job, and I don't have a lot more to add to it. And I think we could micromanage this to death, and it still is not going to make any difference in the long run.
Okay, are there any further comments? Well, I would like.
Could we have a summary of, at the end of, are there going to be any changes made to the letter or not? Because we've suggested some things, I just don't know if any of them are staying.
But I think, because you suggested one thing, I'm sorry, that, you know, unless we take a vote on these suggestions, I don't think staff is being instructed what to do. I mean, it could not be a council majority.
Well, can I provide a summary of the notes that I've taken and suggested changes?
Please.
For your consideration? So, the first comment with regards to providing solutions, I think, is on page five of 10. The last paragraph in the transportation, basically eliminating that paragraph and adding a strong statement suggesting that they mitigate local traffic impacts throughout, you know, through the entire corridor. And so basically eliminating the specifics with regards to how it could potentially be done here in the town. So that would be the first one. Under safety and security, if the council would like to add a statement on page six of 10. Let's see here. Potentially, after the first paragraph, that there should be considerations for underpasses or other means of facilitating emergency access at all crossings near emergency response areas. So that's a potential.
Yeah.
And then, on the summary on page 10, eliminating the bullet points, putting a period after El Camino Real on the first bullet point. Sorry, on the first bullet point, putting a period after El Camino Real, getting rid of the subbullets, and putting in, again, another generalized statement that they that they mitigate all local traffic impacts. And then I think I missed one, I'm sorry, council member Whitmer on page seven of 10, adding a statement under noise and vibration, that they should be mitigating all of the noise and vibration impacts along the corridor. Particularly those that are impacted at a moderate level or greater before the section where it says specific to the town of Atherton.
Okay, great, thanks.
Sorry, Robert, could you just repeat the language about considerations should be given to, did you say, creating an underpass, or words to that effect?
I think that was following on council member Whitmer's comment with regards to emergency services, that consideration should be given to providing an underpass or alternate means of emergency access for emergency service providers located near rail crossings, something to that effect.
Well, maybe I could suggest, Robert, instead of specifically referring to an underpass, you could just refer to grade separation. And where we're really talking about, I think, is Fair Oaks, since that's right next to the exit.
Yeah, for us it is, yeah.
My other input on that, I agree with pretty much what everybody's been saying, which I do the same thing with Elizabeth and Rick and everyone. In terms of transportation, but I'd rather say consideration should be given. I think this is a letter of advocacy and so I think we should advocate for grade separations or whatever it is we want.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that the importance on the town's part, at least residents at this point, they would, the preference is to go under instead of over, I mean, meaning raising the tracks. They want, they want that tunnel component. In other words, go under the tracks.
Probably true.
Well, with the, you know, with the, the wires, it's gonna have to be under is gonna, you know, so you're gonna have a really tall bridge.
Yeah, but we are dealing with high speed rail.
So let's say under then.
That's fine. I, so if it pleases the council, I, I can also work with staff in the final draft to get it out.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I'm fine. That's good.
Can I get a motion to approve the letter as proposed to be amended? So moved.
Second.
Second. Okay.
Beast?
Hi.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Number S?
Hi.
Lewis?
Yes.
And Tegoya?
Hi.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, everybody. Let's move to item five, which is to provide direction to staff with regards to the potential withdrawal from the South Bay Waste Management Authority.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the SBWMA board met a couple of weeks ago, I think now, and made a determination as to the exit cost for the town for, to exit the SBWMA. They came back with a cost of 2.203016, 2.2 million. A hundred thousand of that is anticipated exit cost, direct exit cost. The bulk of it though is related to defeesance on the bond costs. So, but a total number of about 2.6 with about 50,000 play. They directed that back to the town. Then they're going to direct this out to all of their member agencies for a member agency vote on the town's exit. Requires forfeits vote of the member agencies, which, you know, we disagree with, but that's their process in order to authorize the town's exit. So now this, this puts us back to the town. We have approximately 1.8 million dollars in our rate stabilization fund that could be used toward payment of those exit costs. So we'd be about $400,000 short. So staff went back to green waste recovery and said, hey, would you be willing to make up the difference? Green waste recovery came back and said, well, we, we'd consider a $300,000 check to the town to help offset that cost, but that additional 100,000, we would like to recover at some point in the contract. And the estimation was a 1% addition at about year eight in the contract. So I'm going to share a spreadsheet that our three put together for us and was provided to the council back on July 27th. I'm going to share my screen now with that. And we can kind of walk through what the impacts would be, both to our rate stabilization fund and the contract over time. So as I do that, one of the things that I had thought with respect to this spreadsheet, can, can everyone see the spreadsheet? That's able to?
With a mic, with a magnifying glass, yes.
I'll, I'll zoom it up a bit here in a second. One of the things that I had understood, and it was a misconception on my part with respect to this spreadsheet, was that this 262,000 dollar number that you see down here is the, is actually the difference between the recology SBWMA cost, which was revenue requirement of 3.785 in year 2021 versus green wastes of 3.523 in year 2021. The expectation was, and the request to recology from the subcommittee was we want to recover part of our rate stabilization fund over the first few years of the contract. So their increases are lower than they are at later years in the contract. What that means is there, well, that these numbers reflect as negative, meaning the town's paying less or the residents are paying less. But that's not revenue that's going to go into our rate stabilization fund. The thing that's not a part of this spreadsheet is the revenue that's being received from residents as part of their rates, as, as their rates. So right now, recology SBWMA, recology is collecting about 3.2 million dollars. And Bill, correct me if I'm wrong here as I'm, as I'm going along, is collecting about 3.2 million dollars in revenue from rate collections. That goes to pay the SBWMA, recology, agency fees, et cetera. There's an estimated 20% necessary increase in 2021 that's necessary to raise the rates. We're raising our rates in October to, to get us closer to that expectation. But even with those increases that we're projecting in rates, we're only going to collect around 3.5 million, which means that with the compensation requirement for green waste in 2021, we'll be just about breaking even as opposed to having a deposit into our rate stabilization fund. So we won't be adding back into our rate stabilization fund in those first few years as was anticipated, will be instead going to have to be increasing our rates every year or two in order to keep up with the increases. And as you can see in green waste projections in 24 and 25, their increases are higher and even in 26. So still overall, at the end of a 15 year comparison, one contract to another, green wastes is still positive. You know, we are still 4.2 million dollars below where we would be projected with SBWMA and recology. If we add, if we need that hundred, additional 100,000 dollars, their suggestion was to plug it in at this year, an initial 1%, and that drops that 4.2 number down to 3.7. So it's still positive for the town and for the residents over that 15 year comparison, apples to apples, but it's not as positive. Now, going back all the way at the very beginning, what this means though is if we stayed with recology SBWMA, we would have two point, we'd have 1.8 million dollars in our rate stabilization fund. And the increases necessary year over year could be somewhat smoothed out in the first few years. But we would still extinguish that rate stabilization fund over a period of about three years or four years. Whereas with green waste, we'd be starting out at zero with no rate stabilization fund. So any increases in rates and revenue requirements would need to be met by rate increases to the residents in order to satisfy the revenue requirement from green waste. Bill, I think you wanted to add a few other items to this.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, first off, it was very disappointing with the way that we were treated from our colleagues on the board, where we, you know, essentially offered a million and they wanted 2.2, which essentially depletes our numbers. And so, you know, so we're, we're in a hole. You know, overall, overall, we had shown you once before a savings over the 15 year period. And remember the, the, the green waste number is a 20 year number, but only doing apples to apples on 15 years, it comes out to be 4.74% better than what it would have been if we'd stayed with, with recology. But the, the key issue is the cash drain. So as George pointed out, and as you know, because it's been on the look ahead, that, you know, we're planning on taking the, the 325 or 3.25 million dollar revenue and increasing our revenue by about 5%. Now, it's going to be a little bit higher than 5% because, you know, they're more lower, the way we're going to do the tiering is if you did the look ahead, it's going to be a little bit more than 5%. But anyway, so what I ended up doing, you know, George and I spoke, and so I looked at, okay, so where are we with green waste? And when will we need to start raising rates? And of course, understanding we have 1.8 million dollars in the rate reserve fund, where would we have to start raising rates with, with recology? And so, you know, obviously we'll break even, as George pointed out in the first year. But at the end of the first year, we would need to raise the rates to cover a potential shortfall of about two and three quarter, 100,000, 275, 285,000 dollars shortfall. You know, I would recommend that we cover that year and the year after. With recology and keeping our rate stabilization fund as it is, we could delay doing a raise of the, of our rates until 2023. In 2023, and based on the growth there, we would have to have about a 25% increase. And then thereon after that. So we would have to then manage what the, what the down part is. So, you know, and that's all given the fact of where we are with, with green waste, you know, coming back and saying they'll give us some additional funding up there. What would make this thing probably more competitive is if we had an extra half a million dollars or to a million dollars, probably even everything out a hundred percent. But at this point in time, that's where we are. I can go through all the numbers with you directly if you'd like. But, you know, I spent several hours on the spreadsheet, updating it and looking at what the revenues were and things like that. So, so there should not be an illusion that our 2, 2 million dollars or 1.8 million dollar rate stabilization fund is going to get us through for a long period of time. We will have to be raising our rates in a couple of years regardless. And and so there'd be a year or two ahead of or behind what we would have to do for green waste. Although the, the growth in the, the green waste numbers are a little gentler for the most part than the growth that is in with the, with recology. Plus there are the, you know, there are the esoteric issues with green waste versus recology where green waste would get us to 93% almost immediately of diversion. And there's the issue of the, the overage fund, which we've talked about several times of the eight inches of, of a top popping up versus no top popping up at all without getting an extra charge for, for recology. So I can answer any of your questions, but as I said, you know, George and I spoke about this, you know, for quite a while today and early this morning and then this afternoon again. So.
So I, I have a question. I, essentially as I see it, there are two big issues here. One is whether we have sufficient funds available without going into our general fund to pay off the SBWMA required exit fee. That's one. And two is what will the impact be of the being with recology versus with green waste? And, and obviously in the former, if we retain the stabilization fund and the latter, if we've totally depleted to be able to leave recology. And my understanding and Georgia, please, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding from our conversation is that there is that, that in fact, it looks like there will be sufficient funds in the rate stabilization fund alone to cover the exit fee. And that because there, there's a little bit more than 1.8 million dollars and I think there's almost 1.9 million in it. And because the 2.2 million exit fee assumes a hundred thousand dollar fee by SBWMA, which I understand you believe is about 50,000 dollars more than the fee will actually be. So if that's true, given the green waste offer of providing 300,000 dollars, we don't really have to go to that, take that 100,000 dollars that we would replenish from increased rates in year eight, which will have a big impact at the end of the 20 year period. So I'd like to clarify that. Why don't I just start there and clarify that?
So the, I think what you're also including is the potential 175,000 that green waste is supposed to allocate as part of this contract proposal.
That frankly was my second question that I was waiting to get to. But yes, I also understand from you that there's 175,000 dollars that green waste is going to reimburse to us.
Right.
Obviously, if and only if we go with green waste.
Correct.
And that 175 dollars, 75,000 dollars will be coming in sometime between now and and that will go into the rate stabilization fund. Is that correct? I mean, so those are the two questions.
Yes, there, it's there to repay the costs of negotiating the franchise and everything else and in terms of the town's administration of moving forward with green waste. So I can.
A lot of the rate stabilization fund. So in fact, we've depleted to getting to the 1.85 million. That, that includes the costs we've incurred that are going to be reimbursed by green waste if we go with green waste.
Right. So if we go with green waste, our rate stabilization fund at the time that we say, yes, we're going to go, would have a comfortable balance of about 1.8 million plus the amount due and payable by January 1, 2021 by green waste of 175,000. So that, that's what the total of the rate stabilization fund would have. So we still need some additional funds to cover, to get to the 2.2. And to your point, we may not need anything beyond the 300,000 from green waste to do that.
Okay. That's what I thought.
The other thing, the other thing, George, I think we need to point out is the 2.2 may not be 2.2. It may be lightly, slightly less because
Right.
they're looking at all their costs and they made some estimates on the cost and the defeasement cost. As you, as many of you may know, which where, where we think that things got a little bit unfair is, is that they're charging us the interest that would have been charged on the money that they borrowed or our portion of the interest that would have been charged over the next 15 years. You know, the whole thing is kind of crazy, but, but it is. So the 2.2 may not be 2.2, by the way. It, it could be different than that's what, you know, they said at the, at the board meeting last, a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
Elizabeth?
Yeah. So just to clarify what Councilmember Whitmer was saying, it 2.2 for recology may be something less, but that something less was not defined. I've heard a number of maybe 50,000 dollars less, which is pretty insignificant in the big scheme of things. My question has to do, if you come all the way over to the end of the spreadsheet at the end of 15 years, when we're talking about the 4.2 million dollar quote unquote savings by going to green waste, that total savings, my question is, does that include or exclude the essential like 2 million dollars that we are depleting from our residents' payments of the rate stabilization? So in fact, that 4.2 is really not 4.2, but maybe 2 million dollars.
It, it excludes that.
Yeah.
Because it's the, the revenue requirement for green waste at that point over that 15 year period of time is 83 million dollars. And the estimated revenue requirement for recology SBWMA over that same period of time is about 87.5.
I, I know. I, I see that clearly. But what I'm.
But her point is, is that we have 2 million dollars in the fund.
Invested. I mean, in order to save that 4.2, we have to spend 2 million dollars of our residents' money.
But that, that was the question. Now that we're, we're unquestioned. So.
Well, that, so I didn't hear it answered correctly.
That, that's correct. It excludes that number.
Okay. So I think it's fair, more fair to say that the savings over a 15 year period is 2 million dollars. I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about. I think that's. I think that's pretty
Yeah, but I think that if I if I could, Rick, in interject that even
Let me see if there's any public comment and then we'll go on to the
Mike hasn't had and Carrie haven't had.
I do have some questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, they're pretty basic. I I want to confirm that the exit, the SBWMA exit cost it is set and done and there's no avenue to approach that in any other way. Is that correct?
That is correct, there is no appeal to that number.
Okay, and and then um, I I also want to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples. I've always been confused about this and the and the green waste SBWMA thing. Um, how are we, I guess, George, are we comparing the exact same services or is there a difference in services?
Um.
Particularly with regard to regulatory obligations and out years.
Regulatory obligations and out years, exact same.
Oh, I thought that green waste is accepting certain risks that under SBWMA and currently we are accepting, is that correct or no?
No, uh, with respect to uh, SB thirteen eighty-three is probably the the biggest regulatory issue on the horizon. And with green waste uh, recovery, they, uh, contract with them would put us on in automatic compliance at that part. And and they're accepting the risk of any future cost changes there. Uh, with recology SBWMA, there is no set in stone plan yet for how they're gonna comply with SB thirteen eighty-three. And so what's in the projections is what their estimates are for each agency's requirements under SB thirteen eighty-three.
Okay.
A question on top of Mike's, I apologize, just just because you're, you you opened the little door. Just for a point of clarity, SBWMA, the contract pricing is residential and commercial. Correct, George? And the green waste rate structure, all residential tailored for Atherton?
Uh, no, because we do have commercial accounts. And so so in both, it is just, it's the same services. What's what's different is there are, uh, with the SBWMA portion of the SBWMA recology contract, they provide multifamily and commercial um, processing at the Shoreway facility for which the town has a share of that cost.
Right, but I mean, historically, what has happened, and I think that what we're seeing now, correct, is that the the current cost for the shortcomings that are going in a commercial are being diverted, meaning postponed due to COVID. They're not, you know, and historically, they've used residential rates to deal with shortcomings in commercial, correct?
I don't understand.
I'm not quite right then either, perhaps Bill can address that.
I I understand, I understand what he's asking. Um, you know, the SBWMA, you know, can't lose money, okay? But they they have themselves a rate stabilization fund too. So there would probably be shortcoming and there is going to be shortcoming with their collections for commercial. But um, when Garth looked at the numbers, is my understanding, uh, he did look at the total numbers, and so we do have a smattering of commercial contracts here, like the schools and the circus club, and he included that into our numbers and and so. Uh, but if if SBWMA has a shortfall and things like that, that if there's less accounts to to cover, then yeah, for sure, you know, that there's going to be an adjustment if you have less accounts, then then it gets adjusted out. But the only difference between this and and the the uh, the green waste recovery is that to to get any sort of credit, we have to actually get rid of an account, whereas with green waste, it's it's per cart. So if somebody says, I don't need my thirty-one green carts anymore, every green cart that we take off the list is thirty dollars a month credit to the town. So like, there could be some upside there, but it's, you know, it's, you can't, you can't guesstimate it, okay?
I highly doubt that would happen, people love their green cart.
Not when we raise the rates, Elizabeth.
Yeah.
Okay, let's stick to questions, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I um, I guess, George, can you just explain to me, um, if you pick a year, say, year five, do we know how much our residents will pay under the different uh, proposals here?
Yes, so let's look at the twenty twenty-five, uh, for example. We we don't know exactly what the residence per cart cost would be. That would be a projection going forward after successive years of increases. But in twenty twenty-five, the revenue requirement, which is, which is one of the benefits of the green waste contract, that's known and fixed moving forward, would be four point six seven six million dollars. Under recology SBWMA, we don't quite know, uh, because it's a little unpredictable, it's forward determined, there could be other costs involved, we're just not sure. So this is projected for recology SBWMA, and it's projected at four point seven five five million, the revenue requirement. So we have to collect that from the local constituency via their rates. And right now, we're only collecting three point two million, and with the rate increases that we're projecting in October, we'll be collecting about three point five million.
And that's without using any of our rate stabilization funds to make the smoothing of those rate increases uh, less uh,
I understand, if I could again, George, just, does that pattern hold truth throughout or is there, explain to me the you just described a a small delta between what our our rate payers will actually pay. Does that delta grow or shrink over the life of this thing? By year fifteen, is it bigger or smaller?
The the delta between recology SBWMA and green waste or?
Yes, and and what you says, a revenue requirement, which is the minimum we have to charge.
Right, so as the as the years go out and you get to year fifteen, twenty thirty-five, the delta between uh, recology SBWMA's projection and between green waste is about a million two.
Okay, but there's a lot of
If you go back, it's flipped.
If you go back in here, uh, you're right, in twenty twenty-nine, it's it's flipped, it's six point one versus five point nine. But that's, that's a factor of what this negotiated agreement was intended to do, is lower the rate requirement or revenue requirements in the first few years, have a couple of larger adjustments in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and then back at that, back down to the CPI moving forward.
Here, thank you.
And just, may I just?
I have a question, George. Um, so just to clarify the number here, I think there's two numbers that are important. One is uh, of what the total cost difference is going to be over this this fifteen-year period and what the cost of um, the departure from SBWMA is. And if 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 we depart, then we have a cost, which in my numbers show with your adjustment to reducing the expected fees is about two point one five million. But green waste would be providing us with a hundred and seventy-five thousand for our expenses. So in fact, that looks like a total of about a two million dollar cost uh, to us, which means that the savings, if I am doing this right, and this is my question, is the four point two, three million dollars less that two million dollar cost, which we would have used from our rate stabilization funds. So in fact, this shows over fifteen years about and about a two point two million dollar savings with green waste, uh, that's quite variable year to year as you and Elizabeth were just going over. Is that accurate?
Uh, well, I I think I can shorten it down for you. So out of the four point two two nine number, the the town costs to exit the SBWMA would roughly be about one point eight million, because green waste is gonna front, or not front, but actually give three hundred thousand.
Right.
So that, so really, all you're talking about is one point eight million off of that four point two.
So it's about a two point four million dollar savings to go with green waste over fifteen years?
Two point six, actually.
Two point six isn't a one point eight million cost, though.
That, I'm just saying, no, no, at the end of the, at the end of the first year, or at the end of the year fifteen. Okay, the the difference between what we'll have to add to the billing in addition to what we already have in the in the hopper. Okay, green waste will will need to, will need to add and and bill out an extra thirty-one point five million dollars. And for recology, understanding the depletion of the, you know, that includes with the spending the two million dollars, we'll still have to add to the green waste, to the recology number, thirty-three point nine nine four million dollars. And but those are, those are the accurate numbers, you know, direct. Based on the numbers that that Garth did.
Does that include the three hundred thousand dollar reduction that green waste has offered?
Uh, it's not a reduction, it's a, it's a gift.
No, I I didn't include that, because if if they didn't offer it, then we would be taking money out of the out of the the general fund to cover that extra three hundred thousand dollars to pay the two point whatever. So I I did not include that.
And just as a note, the 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 two point six number that we'll use that number that Bill's talking about uh, is fixed. Uh, we know, we know that, because that's what our contract provisions are with green waste, whereas the number with recology is a little more variable.
Okay, let me see if there's any further questions. Uh, and um, I I don't see any questions, are there public comments? If anyone has a question, please let me know, because I I'm I'm losing the participants' views since the screen is filled.
If we're doing the spreadsheet, I can turn that off.
Yeah. I think that'd be great.
Done.
Uh, okay, uh, let's see, public comments, Anthony?
Well, I have one um, from a resident, and the question is, are there differences in the services that they provide, meaning green waste versus recology, and how they handle the materials? And then the second part is, is value of service an element or only price?
Uh, George, yeah, Bill, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, yeah, there is, there is a difference in in what the service is that they're providing. The biggest one that has a cost impact, as I've brought up before, is what's called an overage. Starting January one, if a resident stuffs his his trash barrel or his green cart or his or his blue cart, and the top is not a hundred percent down, you will be charged an extra months period in in your rate. So if you're paying twenty-five dollars a month, you will get paid, charged fifty dollars a month is how it's structured at this point in time.
And that's which which one of these contractors?
That's that's recology. Green waste is said, and we negotiated with them, that they would give us a leeway of up to eight inches. And so, you know, it's got to be generalized before they would charge an overage. Now, both of them will go through a learning period of over period of time, so it's not going to happen day one, but it's going to happen very, very quickly with regards to, you know, to both of them. But eight inches is generally will cover, I'd say eighty to ninety percent of the overages I see in town, whereas recology will not, and you know, I see almost every other house has has at least one overage, if not two, today.
Is there any other service difference between what they're covering?
Um, you know, they're gonna give us the pickup, they're they're gonna, they they will accept putting out uh, whereas recology would not, uh, the electronic stuff. So you can put out for for bulky item pickup, you can put out electronic devices, you know, you know, TVs or PCs and stuff like that, and they will pick those up and they will dispose of them for us. Whereas recology, you have to bring it to a giveaway or go to one of the county sites. And so that's, the rest of it is is pretty darn close to the same. Uh, they will give us two compost giveaways and and the the shred event and all of those stuff. We tried to make sure that the 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 bells and whistles that we get, we have carried forward or are better.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
Uh, day one with green waste, you're in compliance with thirteen eighty-three. So day one, our recycling will, numbers will go up to ninety-three percent. Where where recology hasn't even gotten to the point where they're in compliance with thirteen eighty-three.
Okay. And the second part of the public comment was, is value of the service, the, an element of the consideration by the subcommittee in recommending the green waste contract, or is it only price?
No, I've I've, first off, the price would be compelling if if we had more, if they gave us more to reduce the cost and make it more compelling. At this point in time, the numbers are somewhat, you know, marginal and uh, and but but the quality from green waste, you know, I is going to be better, I believe. And and you know, their their, their assurances to us is that they they are uh, going to be better. They'll have a, you know, a rate supervisor go through and look at what's happening at the different locations, you know, following the route trucks. I've spoken with people in Palo Alto who use green waste, and I've not gotten a complaint from anybody. I'm sure there are some, but I have personally not gotten any complaints from the people that I, you know, I associate with in Palo Alto. So I think that the quality will be better, uh, the satisfaction will be better, and all the rest of the service levels with the liquidated damages associated with them are are going to be the same or maybe slightly better with green waste. But there're gonna be no worse.
Thank you, George?
Uh, yeah, just that last echo there for for one, there'll be no worse. I mean, recology is a good service provider as well, green waste is gonna be another good service provider, but there there will be cans knocked over, there will be lids up, there will be issues that occur on the routes, those things are going to occur. Uh, but for the town, long term, we're a member of a larger JPA that is being driven by commercial and multifamily growth in other communities, and our costs that we can't control are aren't the waste side of things, they're the processing side of things through the SBWMA, and that's where it's an unknown. And by exiting the JPA and going with green waste as a singular franchise with the town, we're controlling our own destiny a lot more.
I have a question.
Uh, well, we're we're in public comment right now. Uh, are there any more public comments, Anthony?
Yes, there was one additional public comment posted in the group chat. Is there a difference in what they do with materials?
And I can answer that too.
Go ahead.
So um, so what happens today is uh, and and it's going to change over time with with recology. Right now, recology takes the blue cart, sorts it out, and they, then they go to different uh, repurposing organizations. Uh, the green cart goes to a to a compost, one of two compost facilities and the um, and the black cart goes to a disposal site. So what green waste is going to do, and they're going to change a little bit of the process. So what they're suggesting that we do is that you throw your food waste, when most people are doing that already, throw your food waste into the black bin. They will open up the black bins, the same as recology is eventually going to go do. And they will then sort the material out, so they will still repurpose what can be repurposed. And then they will take the compost, and they they have a sister company that has a compost field, so they will take care of all the compost. Whereas right now, uh, that's that's a big cost item for SBWMA and their two disposal sites.
Okay. Are there any other other public comments?
Yes, sir, we have one other one, uh, I'm going to unmute them. I've asked them to unmute themselves, I'm gonna see if they want to give me their comment in the chat if they can't do that.
Elizabeth, you want to ask your question while Anthony's working on this?
Well, it was, it had to do with um, what George was saying, and um, it was um, that it had to do with, um, what George was saying and, um, it was, um, that the green waste, um, is, they are, there's a possibility, as I understand it, that they will contract with the SBWMA facility to take our waste up there and process it. Am I, is that correct?
No, that was an option that they gave us and, and that's not what we're looking at.
I knew we talked about it at one point and I thought that it was there at their option.
No, it wasn't. It's at our option because they weren't sure whether, if we didn't get out of the, if we, if we chose not to get out of the SBWMA just right now, then that would be an option to us. But the costs were marginal if best. And so it wasn't economically feasible.
Right, right.
We have Mike Kelly who's unmuted to ask his question.
Great, Mike, go ahead.
Mike Kelly? Well, doesn't appear to be speaking, so I can receive it at some point and, uh,
If you can hear us, uh, why don't you send your comment either to me or Anthony via chat? You can do a private chat and then we'll, uh, relay that. Or i- if you get, um, your audio working, you could give it while we're in the middle of the discussion. But, uh, at this point, I'll bring it back to council, uh, for comments. Bill?
Yeah, so, uh, since Mike is the general manager, I do want to say, and I've said all along, you know, recology's done a great job, SBWMA has done a, a good job. It's just that, as George pointed out, and, and recology, when we talk about the recology costs that are here, those aren't just recology costs. That is all the costs associated with having the, the waste picked up, transported to San Carlos, sorted, and then eventually repurposed or disposed of. And so, so it's, it's, all that cost, you know, less than half of it today is, is recology's cost. So there's, there's not an issue and I don't, we don't want to say anything bad about recology because they haven't done anything bad. Uh, and the service has been good and they've been good partners to have. But, you know, I think that it's, it, you know, it's important that, you know, we, we look downstream and we look at, you know, what not only the cost is, but the service and, you know, will we be protected in the long term? That's kind of where I'm sitting. It's, it's a guaranteed contract. But I will also, you know, say, look, it's, i- i- it would be a better deal if we had an extra five hundred thousand to a million dollars. You know, we're a million dollars shorter than where we thought, when we thought it was a good deal. And, you know, and, and now we don't have that. And so, um, you know, green waste has given us some, some improvement. Maybe we could get some more improvement if we, if we continue to have discussions with them. But, but, but I do think that, I do think that, um, you know, controlling our own destiny and not being, you know, one vote out of twelve, when the rest of the, the communities that are voting, uh, all their big problem, as I've pointed out to the council, their big problem is that the diversion from the commercial side of the house is, is thirty percent or below. And so, you know, that's, that's the big issue with the SBWMA region trying to get to the seventy percent convert, you know, diversion. And so, um, anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please, Carrie.
Can I make a suggestion that, I mean, this is obviously something that, you know, we have had, and it's, it's moving quickly because, you know, we do have some time constraints. But as I, and that we have about thirty to forty-five additional days. You know, I think it would be prudent for us to finish our conversations with green waste. And, you know, let's just say, get into the box and see what we can come up with in a final discussion and by adding the ownership into, because they are a family-owned operation, um, very closely met. And we've been dealing with, um, um, the operations component and, and very, very, very helpful. But since we do have some small tweaks that possibly could come into play, bring it back to council in thirty to forty-five days to basically commit or not, or come into a direction with something, um, I think that that would be a prudent way to deal with the, the next thirty to forty-five days.
Okay, George?
I, I, I actually think that's, that's too long of a timeline. I think green waste needs to actually get things moving in order to, to be, uh, in operation by January one. You need to shorten that forty-five days.
Would you remember what the, what the appendix said, what, when they were planning on starting the transition planning, George?
October first, I believe.
Okay.
Here to go, we also have Tammy Del Benny on the phone. I believe she's with Green Waste and she wants to comment.
Recology.
I'm sorry.
No, she's recology.
Sorry, recology, my apologies.
Can you hear me? Just to make sure?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, yes, Tammy Del Benny, I'm, uh, with recology, San Mateo County. And I just want to say first that it, you know, it has been, and I hope it continues to be, an honor to, provide service to the town of Atherton. Uh, we have had a wonderful relationship. And, um, and, you know, ten years goes by pretty fast. Um, but what I do want to comment on was something that was stated earlier about the overage fees. And just to clarify, um, the overages, um, that are in the, contract, it's not a month's fee for a cart whose lid is, is just a jar or there's an extra, um, bag. Um, the fee is twenty-five percent of the monthly fee. So it's, it's, it's not a hundred percent of your monthly fee. So I just want to clarify that. And they, there was a lot of discussion in our negotiations about overages. And it's, um, and how to manage them related to storm water regulations. So, um, there's a concern if lids are, you know, if the lid is, is somewhat a jar, a couple inches because you didn't, you know, shove the bag down, that, that's really, I wouldn't consider that an overage. It's, it's the blatant, you know, lid propped up because there's an extra bag sitting on top. That's what an overage comes into play. But again, we want to make sure that the town is, is in compliance with stormwater regulations and, and which have, you know, come down the, you know, increased and, and are going to be looked at throughout the county. So it's really just a support mechanism for the, for the town. So I just want to clarify that.
Well, we could look at the contract and see what the amendment described says. You're showing a little more flexibility, Tammy.
Okay.
Well, so, uh, let me see if there's any additional comment. Well, I, I, I mean, if there isn't, I'll make a comment. I think that the, the reason that we've gone as far into this matter as we've gone, and we've, on this, is because, uh, recology and SBWMA are servicing uh, clients who have substantial commercial interests as well as residential interests. And we have very minimal, uh, commercial interest. So we end up bearing our residents frankly bear some cost because of, uh, the spreading of those costs in the SBWMA recology contract against all of its customers. Uh, and we end up bearing some of those costs. And the reason that we've gone as far into this review as we have is because, uh, green waste will, will, uh, not, uh, have us incur those costs, have our residents incur those costs. Uh, and I think that's been a very important and very time-consuming inquiry by both the council and the staff. I, the way I look at this contract is there's about, I don't know, two points five, two point six million dollars to savings over fifteen years. And, um, in either case, with that savings analysis, we will have depleted our rate stabilization fund unless we want to charge more and rebuild this rate stabilization fund, which frankly, we or future councils may decide to do. It looks to me like this is still a good thing to do. We're not going to have to spend general fund money. That it looks like with the offer from Green Waste that we're going to be able to cover the exit fee. So I'm, i- if, I, I think Carrie's suggestion about buying some more time is a good one. But I think we have to make sure that that would work. And I guess that's a question for you, George. We, we, we obviously would, if they need to have it by October first, we could put this into the September agenda, which is already a very full agenda. But that's, looks like the only option to me.
Well, the response to, to that, uh, and Carrie's suggestion, I, I think there is a time of, of the essence issue show. You would need to meet in December. And there, there may be some additional things that could be gained, but I don't think there's a whole lot.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Elizabeth, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, so, um, I was very impressed with the Green Waste, uh, format, the, the, um, presentation, the family-owned business, uh, concept and the fact that, uh, it would be, um, it's, it's a better fit for our community, uh, because we don't have a ton of commercial or, um, a lot of retail and things like that. What I have a hard time with, I'm struggling with is the fact that we are taking, uh, money in our rate stabilization fund, which is actually our residents' fees uh, and using it and paying to get out of the JPA from SBWMA. Uh, and the return is not as significant as it was first presented to us that it was going to be. Over a fifteen-year period, the, the net return, uh, savings, um, is about two million dollars. That is not a huge amount. And I can foresee that at the end of that fifteen years, I know that Green Waste has, uh, given us kind of a fixed rate, uh, contract that we can depend upon. And we're saying that there's just no way that it's going to go up from what, uh, is projected. Unlike recology, which there's all these potential variables and the, uh, that, you know, we don't have any control over how high they may increase the rates. It's just, it just, I'm having a heartburn doing that for what I perceive is a small, uh, savings of even two, two million dollars. I think that overall, um, we've had really good service from SBWMA, uh, recology, from recology, not the SBWMA. And I know that the JPA, the SBWMA has been a bit of a heartburn and a challenge for our, uh, council representative being on the board, uh, and dealing with them. But, um, so that's just kind of what I, um, am having a hard time with. Although, uh, all things being equal, um, I think that, uh, the green waste model is a better fit.
Okay, is there anyone who doesn't want to continue to go forward with green waste? I mean, the, the staff is looking for direction. That's the purpose of my question.
I can make a motion.
Well, direction.
Do you need a motion, George?
I think some variables that haven't been completely flushed out. And if we can put this on the, uh, September agenda and get some more clarity between now and then uh, about some of the numbers, because even, we had this late-breaking news this afternoon about, you know, kind of a, an error on the spreadsheet, which was misrepresenting the, um, the numbers. And there's a lot of numbers flying around.
Well, George misread the spreadsheet. There wasn't an error on the spreadsheet.
Right. So if, if I could, one of the, if we do put it over for two weeks, I'd be very interested to see if there's any room in, in green waste to help make this be a, a, a little bit easier decision. Because, um, I think it's both Bill and, and Elizabeth, probably everybody has said, at the end of fifteen years, there's just not a lot of savings by going to green waste on this. That's, that's obvious. Uh, having said that, one of the points I'd like to stress, and I know we've got an SPWA, uh, member here is, is, I, I think it's very significant that we would have greater control over our destiny by not dealing with the JPA that, that, you know, uh, in my view, handled the exit pretty aggressively. And that, to me, so it's close, that pushes me towards, you know, wanting to get out of, of, of a JPA that'll treat us like that rather than wanting to stay in one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
So if there is a motion for continuance to the September sixteenth agenda, that would just be to, to move the item to then, staff would continue and circle back with green waste to see if there's anything more that can be done, uh, to make this more palatable. But that would need a direction from the council to do that.
That would be the intent of my conversation and the motion.
And, and just for, for clarity, um, the drop dead date for,
I could second that. I'll second Carrie's motion.
Weest?
Hi.
Woodmer?
Yeah, of course.
Lemprous?
Hi.
Lewis?
Hi.
Yes. Okay, that finishes that item. We're past six o'clock.
I, my, my computer's going to die. I have to go get my power cord.
Well, uh, what do you want to do with the flock matter? Because, do you want to continue with George?
Pleasure in the council. September sixteenth is getting quite large again.
Yeah, I know, I know. We may have to push something off.
You can manage it, I think, mayor. You can manage it.
Manage the count, the agenda for the sixteen?
Right.
Either that or finish this item right now. I, I think this item's going to take a half an hour.
I think it deserves a half an hour.
Yeah. Okay, let's, uh, let's take another look at the September sixteenth agenda, George, and we'll, we'll work it out.
Okay.
And does, does anyone feel strongly that we should deal with the flock, uh, ALPR matter now?
I'm certainly able to. I mean, I, as opposed to, if, if, if it's an issue of people have to leave or whatever, I'm just saying, I've got, I've got a half hour and I'm able to do it if that's helpful.
I would willing, I would be willing to sit, I mean, be and be here to, uh, be part of it if it helps.
Okay. I've got a park and rec meeting at six thirty, uh, but I can be late for that. So if, if, Bill and Elizabeth, are you okay to stay?
I just have to go get my power cord.
Yeah, I can stay for a little bit. If it's going to go on past a half hour, I can't.
Okay, so let's try to keep it to as close, at least let's get into it and it will help on it. Who isn't, is, is, uh, the chief?
That's correct. It'll be the chief, and I think they got a PowerPoint.
One way to save time might be, if I could suggest to the mayor, might be to really make sure the chief is short and quick on a PowerPoint.
I've already planned on that, council member Lemprous.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Yeah, well, I don't think we have to go through each image of each location, so there's very limited number of PowerPoints. Why don't you go ahead, chief?
Did you want to wait for Elizabeth to get back with the power cord or?
I think she knows what a flock looks like.
All right. So council members, members of the public, welcome. I am going to keep this, uh, brief and to the point. The staff study that we have essentially is the same information you've received twice before. The focus of tonight is essentially on the location of the cameras and working with flock and their site assessments. We did come up with the sixteen camera locations and those are listed on the PowerPoint and on the link. Uh, and receiving feedback, uh, from you all through George, uh, this morning, we, we particularly focused on three cameras. So camera two right now, uh, is on westbound Watkins at Middlefield. And the suggestion was to move it to eastbound Watkins. And the suggestion was to move it to eastbound Watkins and ECR, which the commander and I both agree and support. Camera number nine, which is scheduled to be eastbound Pohemus at Alameda, move that to Selby Lane in the area of Oakwood, which would help us catch traffic coming from the Redwood City side of town. Camera number 10, to move it from where the the potential location is westbound Atherton Avenue in Alameda, move that to westbound Alejandra at ECR, giving us better coverage. And then the further feedback came potentially, if you wanted to expand the project now, three additional cameras, which would really close, I think, the net around town and leverage this project, make it more efficient. It would be an add a camera at eastbound Community Alago at the grade school at Alameda, add a camera at westbound Isabella at ECR, and then add a final camera to Glenwood at Laurel. In addition to that, we proposed locations of the signage, which I think we all agree, a very large part of this project is a deterrent. And putting the information out there helps amplify that. So you can see for yourselves the location of the proposed nine large signs.
And Can you invite it advance your charts? Because that would be if you show us the locations of where those signs are going to be.
We were just at it.
Yeah, okay. No, I only saw one through nine. Okay, those are them, just nine signs? I thought we were doing more than nine.
Those are the nine large signs, and then each camera pole itself would have a smaller sign that would look the same as the large signs.
And Chief, you don't have an image of the large sign?
We do. It's right there.
Oh, that that's a 20 by 30 inch sign?
Yeah.
Well, relatively.
Okay.
That was superimposed on an existing pole. That gives you an idea of the size, the visibility, and then each each pole itself, each camera, but also a smaller sign for increased visibility. So the overall cost of the project, sticking with the 16 cameras and the signage, is $34,500. And then annually after that, as $2,000 per camera, it'd be $32,000 per year. If you add three more cameras, the one time cost this year would be $40,500. And then they're going forward annually, it'd be $38,000. And then we're also looking at, once we step off of the project, doing some marketing to reach out, as we talked about, is the public-private partnership. We've already gotten some inquiries. We're excited about that, and I think we'd be able to enhance our project using private funds for the benefit of the town. So with that, I'm going to stop. I promise to be brief and I'll open it up to your questions, comments.
Great. Okay, questions? Mike.
Chief, can you just remind me what we do with the data? And does any of it go to NICRIC or any other outside of Atherton agency?
Right, and so there would be a a continued partnership like we do now with our current ALPR cameras that it would go to NICRIC. And they have the same, you know, very secure, very stringent, rigid regulations and procedures as that house, that is how to be used.
But not privately funded cameras or or also privately funded?
No, our intent with the private cameras, I think it makes it clean. There's different models out there, but I was talking with the commander today. I think what makes it clean, if we have private cameras, it seems cleanest to us that we would add those cameras on our existing contract with Flock, and then we would bill those private residents with the understanding that we are administering the program, they would have no access to it at all. It's just a way to leverage and make our project and make our system larger.
Thank you.
Chief?
Yes.
To the mayor.
Please.
Did the department look at statistical information related to burglaries as part of this decision-making process? Or did you just not not consider any of that data? I apologize.
Well, we consider that as the actual data now. I think that's hard, but you know, I think as you all remember, this conversation got started when we had our spikes in burglaries, you know, a while back. And the agreement was, or at least on our side supporting, and I believe from you all, this is an excellent tool to help combat burglaries. First off, the deterrent factor, and then second off, the investigative ability for us to be able to go back and track certain vehicles that were found in that area at the time of the burglary. So it really gives us a great tool that we don't currently have right now.
Okay, thank you.
But Chief, did you did you look at where, based on our data, where the crime, the criminals are coming from? Now, they're coming through Redwood City or through the unincorporated county areas to get into town. Did you look at any of that?
No, we don't have any really data to track that. I mean, that's what's hard to figure out where they're coming from. Certainly where we've decided to locate these cameras are the key points where we feel the suspects would be coming in and leaving to track. But before this, I'm I'm not aware of of an element or some sort of way for us to have tracked where these suspects have come from, because we only had, we've only unfortunately had very few arrests. And the one large group that was in large part responsible for the surge were coming out of LA area.
Well.
Yeah, so so Chief, my understanding is, is it like, for example, in on ECR or on Middlefield Road, you know, we're we're finding a number of, you know, cars that may be stolen or people that have probation issues or something like that. You know, so you do have some data and some that is better than none. And so, you know, my understanding, looking at your reports and and over the years, you know, listening to, you know, PD going through where they're having problems and what the what the traffic stops are being and what the ticketing is and what the issues are, is it's, you know, you, there is some, and that's better than not. If you'd comment on that.
Real quick. Part of part of what we looked at with respect to the placement of some of the cameras was on our most recent burglaries. And when I say most recent, talking about the most recent rash of burglaries we had, the ones that prompted the 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 town meeting. And and a lot of those burglaries, we felt, came off the 280 corridor, which explained the initial placement of one camera as opposed to on the Selby Lane side. But we ended up switching back over just after getting council input. So we did look at that a little bit. Because when you look back, we actually did have a rash of burglaries prior to the recent rash where we had a neighborhood meeting probably about four years ago that was over on the Selby Lane side from a burglar that was coming from the Redwood City area off of Selby.
And I think just to comment further, even if we had more data that showed they were coming from one location, that could change next week or tomorrow. I think more importantly, the focus needs to be on where we've decided to capture these cameras. So regardless where they're coming from in the area, we have the most probability to capture that if needed.
Elizabeth, you have a question?
I do. I have a question. So going back to some of the private cameras that are being proposed to be set up by neighborhood groups, do we have a sense of how many neighborhood groups are wanting to do that? And would they then coordinate with the Police Department, the chief and the commander to make sure that all that data is transferred into your database?
Yeah, so for now, we have one resident that has made somewhat of a serious inquiry for three cameras. I forget the location. I've also been in contact several times with the Lindenwood Homeowners Association and Lloyd and Park. There's strong interest there, I think both, and I think it's a wise decision. Both want to see this project get kicked off and and see how the feedback is and how the program is running. For Lloyd and Park and for Lindenwood, for the number of cameras they might need, based on the price point and the number of homes for each for each individual homeowner, the cost would be very, very low.
Okay, do you see that as a trend that would then kind of catch on to the rest of the Atherton? And then would they would they be cross purposes to where we're proposing to install our public?
There could be, and that's a good question. You know, if there were a privately funded camera that would allow us to move one of our cameras. And talking with the CEO of Flock, this is certainly something that they've experienced. And dealing with them, it's it's something that we can take advantage of.
Relocate them, correct?
I'm sorry.
It's pretty easy to relocate cameras.
Yes, and that's a good point. All the cameras that we've identified, and we anticipate the three additional, if you chose to go that route now or later, they're all identified as being solar, and so they are very easy to move.
Okay.
Hopefully not to steal.
Chief, I when you were listing the changes you were recommending, was one of those changes moving what had been camera nine at Pohemus and Alameda to Selby and Oakwood?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, is there any public comment?
None.
No public comment. Okay, let's bring it back for council comments.
I have a relatively quick comment.
Please.
Chief, in mapping everything out and knowing a lot of the history related to burglaries, I see a significant weakness in the east to west movement in central Atherton, meaning areas that come off Marymont, Euclid, and near Emily going southbound or northbound. I see a lot of capability of going east to west throughout entire central Atherton without hitting a camera. Can you, you know, did you guys consider anything to shore up those east to west movements? Because that section off Stockbridge is hot, because they come off Woodside Road to avoid Alameda. And you can't get it in the bottom section from Selby South. So I just, in mapping it, I see a significant weakness for central Atherton.
I'll let the commander comment in a second, but you know, it's it. We tried to do the best that we could maximize each camera location with the limited numbers we've had. That said, I'm not, you know, not advocating for more cameras, but as we get into this, and I feel like it's a successful project, you know, and potentially once, you can certainly scale this up or scale it down very easily.
Okay, yeah. Joe, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, you know, there are definitely some areas where we feel like cameras could go in that would be beneficial. But we also felt like with the initial deployment of the cameras, getting them in the ground, getting them operational, some of the obvious holes, we could fill as we go. And like the chief had mentioned, we have a handful of residents who are interested in in filling in those blanks, and if we need to fill in more cameras, we can. We just felt like for the recent burglaries that we have had, and just going off the recent history and the fact that maybe a handful of those folks have actually been caught, we'd start in the areas where we were getting hit the worst.
That doesn't mean we couldn't put a sign in a fake box that looks like a camera at that location.
Right, true. The signs certainly have deterrent value. Bill, you have a comment?
Yeah, so so yeah, thanks for the presentation, guys, and thanks for making it brief. I'm I'm in favor of having signs all over town. And I think that your your selection and the discussion that I had yesterday with the city manager about the if it takes these three extra cameras to cut off the majority of the areas that are entering into our town, I think that that's a prudent investment in our time. And then if if certain different communities, such as, you know, a couple of them that have already come forward, you know, want their special cul-de-sac or, you know, one or two roads in their area blocked off, they can they can do that as well, which is just, you know, belts and suspenders. But I do think we should, we should get these cameras where the, you know, the mid the major pieces of traffic are going back and forth through the town. It just makes sense to me if it's if, as you say, if it's three additional cameras and three additional cameras. I I just don't see that that's a big investment for saying to the community, we're doing our best to to make sure that we've got full coverage or as full coverage as we can get.
Through the mayor, I just have one quick question. Okay, on page 13, the the cost, it says it's the total of $34,500 plus MCE installation fees for the warning signs. So I guess depends upon how many warning signs we're going to install. But do we have a sense ballpark, how much that's going to be?
Yeah, I'm not sure if Robert's still on the line. I'm not sure if that would come under their current contract or if that's going to be something additional.
I think that's going to be additional.
Either way, I would expect it to be not significant.
It's not significant, and it's it's nine signs at present unless you choose to put up more.
Yeah. Maybe $500 each or something.
Less than that, less than that.
Okay, thank you. I'm all for it. Do you need a motion?
If I could, before you do, just, I I want to go back to, and I know we're discussing location here, but I continue to have an issue with with these with these cameras. And the the nature of my issue is really civil liberties and the fact that we're tracking innocent people who happen to be traveling through town, and we're sharing that information with, you know, statewide and and other agencies is is a problem for me. And I just think it's something that I don't think is warranted by what we have now, meaning we've never just demonstrated utilities, we haven't solved any acts. When we when we talked about it, and we didn't have any robberies, and anybody else had said they'd solve using them. So we're giving up our freedom in exchange for something that I don't think has has proven its worth. So I just want to say that that has nothing to do, I guess, with the location of the of the flock cameras. But I think we should be aware that we are, you know, giving up a little bit of our of our residents and and visitors' freedoms as they come into Atherton.
I totally understand that concern, and it brings up a good point again about the security of our system, the stringent policies and procedures we have, and the fact that in our policy, it says that we're going to have an outside entity yet to be identified to come in and do annual audits just to ensure, and that the commander within the police department is the only person who would have access to the system based on official requests that all will be tracked.
I I agree, and I asked for the independent audit, and I'm glad we did that. I'd still be willing to bet even money or bet bet money with anyone here that within 10 years, there'll be a problem of some sort with this.
Bill?
Yeah, so I know we've been talking about this independent auditor for almost a year now, and it's been in our procedure for more than a year. So I guess I was, I keep asking the question, where are we on getting that independent auditor and doing an audit? Because we're supposed to be doing annual audits. And I know that last time we spoke about this was multiple months ago. And Chief or or Joe, what you said is, well, what we're going to do is, you know, we're going to band with other communities. Well, okay, but when our procedure says we're going to be doing these these audits annually, and we have these license plate readers that are certainly already in use, I think we're we're way behind the eight ball in in meeting that compliance.
Um, I understand your concern, and I don't anticipate any problems finding an auditor once the project is finalized and going forward. We certainly have resources through the California Chiefs Association, and also the gentleman who conducted our first evidence audit. If you remember when I first got here, that's within his wheelhouse as well. It's just a matter of reaching out.
But if I could have a follow on question then, Chief, and and Mr. Mayor, we we've had license plate readers on our cars for how long?
Years.
Years, and we haven't done an audit, even though our procedure says we are annually. So I think we're well behind the eight ball here, to Mike's point.
Yeah, I understand, and we'll identify the resource as soon as possible.
I think we need a date.
Can we commit to a timeframe, Chief?
Well, the end of this calendar year would be the first year under the new policies for us to do an audit. And so I think of our existing system, and then I I would imagine our flock system will be up and running in a two or three months, which will not give us much time to audit, but we can certainly audit what we have.
Well, I think that's reasonable if you give us
I don't think it's the new cameras that need to be audited in two months. It's whatever's been accumulated and managed over the time. You know, certainly over the last year, and we've we've had
Typically, our audit schedule is on the calendar year, and I don't know if there's anything indicating we should push that up. And so December will be here before we know it. And that will be our first audit of our existing system and our flock cameras, depending on how long they're up and running with that data.
I I think I think it would be good to, you know, at least see what kind of data, you know, is there in the flock cameras, even if it's only a couple of months. Even if it's only a couple of months. But I agree, you know, our, our civil liberties are, um, at risk, but, uh, there, there are safeguards and audits and, uh, stop gaps that we will protect that. I really think that we should do everything we can to, uh, protect the data and protect our residents. But I do think that they're necessary and I, I feel a ground swell from a lot of other residents, Mike, I have to say, who really want these types of license plate readers, uh, because of all the traffic coming through the town, through their neighborhood.
Yeah, and, and if I could just make an, an aside and say how much I appreciate the fact that, that my fellow council members have taken my concern seriously and, you know, every time I bring it up. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Okay.
Okay, can I get a motion? Which could include a timetable for this audit.
Well, I, I, I'd like to make a motion that we, we buy the signs that were specified or more, that we, we get the flock cameras as identified. And I would like to add the extra three that the chief spoke about and, uh, and that we get an audit done by the end of the year.
I'll second that.
Okay, Anthony?
Weest.
Aye.
Woodmer?
Yes.
Lemprous?
No.
Lewis?
Aye.
Weest. Oh, excuse me, thank you. And DeGolia.
Aye, aye. Yes.
Okay, uh, that ends the meeting. Uh, council comments. I do want to make one, uh, comment, which is we've been asked by Menlo Park, really by Ray Mueller, who last year was the mayor, not this year, but last year was the mayor of Menlo Parks, but on the council, I think, uh, eight years. He initiated a program in, uh, Samatail County to honor, uh, heroes, COVID-19 heroes. People that have done service, uh, in the community, uh, to the benefit of, uh, other constituents in the community and, um, they, and they put out an internal button similar to our listserv notices that Anthony sends out, recommending, uh, any, any resident who can nominate someone that's done a great job to do so. And, uh, I, I would like to recommend that we do the same thing. He sent me that information. And I transferred it to George. I, I don't know if everybody has seen the material that he put together. It's just a, uh, something to give to Anthony that he could, uh, craft a notice in his listserv, uh, weekly email about. Bill?
Yeah, um, I, I didn't see that we were gonna talk about this until late today. And so, uh, you know, I have not seen any additional information. So I would like to see some information perhaps and bring it forward to the, in two weeks and then, you know, I recommend. And then I think at that time, we would also have to see how we're going to have, you know, some sort of clearinghouse for, you know, if there's recommendations within our town, you know, I mean, you know, hopefully all of them are valid, but you know, that somebody would actually go through there or there'd be a subcommittee of staff and maybe a council member or two that would, you know, vet them, so to speak. Isn't, isn't that how that works in Menlo Park?
Yeah, I would establish a committee from the council and that would work with the staff. Why don't, uh, George can share with you what we've got and Anthony could craft a page that, that you and everybody else in the council can see. I don't think that's a big deal. It's just a statement there. I mean, I, I could read to you what they requested. It's very short. It, it says, we're looking for hometown heroes. Can you help us identify and honor neighbors helping others in this COVID-19 pandemic? Please feel free to email us or post videos, nominate others or share your stories at the link below. And they provide a Facebook link, which we, you know, I, we can give to you, cause they, it's being used by all the same towns in the, in, uh, Samatail County.
Well, it makes sense to me if we can do, push it off for a couple of weeks. It feels like this is a little bit, uh, you know, I won't say sloppy, but when none of us are seeing it, we don't know what's going on. So let's just talk about it in two weeks.
I agree. I'm happy with that.
Fine. Okay, so I have a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Bye. Have a good Labor Day, everyone.
All right, you too. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.